And now I'd like to call to order the May 15, 2019, meeting of the Assistant Housing Governing Board. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Board Member DeCecio. Board Member Guevara.
Here.
Board Member Mendoza. Board Member Nowakowski.
Here.
Board Member Pastor. Board Member Stark.
Here.
Board Member Weisehan.
Here.
Board Member Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Waring. Vice Woman Gallego. Chairwoman Gallego.
Here. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from April 17, 2019?
Accepted as submitted.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
A resolution authorizing the City of Phoenix Housing Department to enter into contracts with the Native American Connections, President Partners Limited Partnership, Paradise Palms Senior Housing Limited Partnership, Paradise Palms Multi-Housing Limited Partnership, and Catholic Charities Community Services to allocate 80 U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Project-Based Veterans Affairs Supporting Housing Vouchers, and 63 Special Population Project-Based Section 8 Housing Choice Vouchers, and further authorizing the City of Phoenix Housing Department to take all actions and execute all documents to effectuate the agreements. I move that this be accepted.
Wonderful. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. With that, we will adjourn the meeting of the Assistant Housing Governing Board. Thank you to Member Weisehan for joining us. We'll call the formal meeting of the City Council to order. City Clerk, may we have a roll call?
Councilman DeCecio. Councilwoman Guevara.
Here.
Councilwoman Mendoza. Councilman Nowakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor. Councilwoman Stark. Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Waring. Mayor Gallego.
Here. And I, on behalf of my colleagues, congratulate Councilman DeCecio on this afternoon's graduation of his two daughters. We have an interpreter here today. Mario, will you please introduce yourself?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My name is Mario Barajas. I'm going to be serving as today's Spanish interpreter. I will be making a Spanish announcement to the Spanish speakers. Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Mario Barajas, y voy a estar sirviendo como su intérprete de español el día de hoy. Si acaso alguien necesitará el servicio de intérprete de español, pueden acudir al personal de la ciudad, cualquier miembro allá atrás, para poder recibir el equipo, los audífonos, para recibir la interpretación al español. Gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Will the Clerk please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting, and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinance is number G-6589 through 6590, S-45627 through 45679, and Resolutions 21744 through 21747.
Thank you. Next, we move to our boards and commissions nominations. Do we have a motion to approve the mayor and city council boards and commissions nominations?
Move to approve mayor and city council boards and commission nominations.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Passes unanimously. Congratulations to our new board members. We're excited to have you here. We have several board members here to be sworn in. that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona,
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of according to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations and welcome aboard. We next move to liquor license. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
We do. I move to approve items 2 through 28, except for item 27, which is recommended for disapproval, and item 28, which is requested to be continued to June 5, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Item 27 is in Councilwoman Guevara's district. Councilwoman?
Yeah, I'd like to move to disapprove, and if I may just explain, this is a part of my district where our neighborhoods are very active and organized. It's pretty clear from the 70 letters of protest that we received, and when there's an issue, our neighborhood leaders work together to help solve it. I place a lot of faith in their knowledge and understanding about what is best for this neighborhood. This location was previously an enormous challenge for the area, and I know they're approaching this application with the full picture of the history of this property and the impact that it's had on the area. Because of that, my office has recently worked with these neighborhood leaders to try to craft an agreement between the neighborhood leaders and the business owner regarding this And so I'd just like to thank the neighborhood leaders for all their efforts in doing so, and for the applicant for being willing to engage with them. Unfortunately, we just came a little bit short, and we weren't able to reach a complete agreement, and so I encourage the applicant to continue his dialogue with the neighborhood leaders. If my office can continue to be helpful in any way, I'm happy to be a part of that conversation. But unfortunately, today, I can't support this application without the support of our neighborhood leaders, and so I move to disapprove item 27. Second.
We have a motion in a second. We have one card from the owner, and several from the community. Councilwoman, would you like a presentation, or go straight to cards?
We can go to the cards. I think it's fine.
All right. First is the owner, Michael Bedore. And Michael will be followed by Jeff Spellman.
Hi, my name's Michael Bedore, 40-year resident of Phoenix, and I recently met this new business owner two months ago while walking on the property. I'm new in the neighborhood. For seven months, I've lived at the largest apartment complex on the property about one block north, Modern on the Rail. We have 26 buildings. We have a new property owner there at Modern on the Rail two weeks ago, and we're already talking with Sonny, the owner of this property, where he's changed the colors. He has the security-conscious mind of his property down the street, a mile away at 7-Eleven. He's bringing that attitude here to reduce crime and keep crime off that property. New streetscape, new colors of the building. I met him kind of happenstance two months ago when I'm walking the property, going to Chase Bank and so forth, and City Councilwoman's office was very helpful. The utility boxes, CenturyLink, everything else on his frontage road, just me being a local activist citizen, part of 19th North, she jumped right on to help those utilities, CenturyLink, Cox Cable fixed all those broken utility boxes, so thank you, Councilwoman. And I think working continually with Sonny, we're going to have a very, very secure, safe environment. There are tens of thousands of people that come through the corner on Metro, Light Rail, and public transportation like myself. That store is right on those rails and bus lines, and, you know, with the hot weather coming, I'm thinking wrist bite, water, drinks. A nice place to stop and get a refreshment of food item while you're traveling. And I've been talking with Sonny also, and working with City Councilwoman, she's done great with 19th Avenue North, cleaning up the trash. That whole neighborhood was very trashy when I moved in six months, seven months ago, and now it's much, much cleaner. 19th Avenue North, City Councilwoman, very responsive, getting all that trash picked up, including this property should stay as clean as the property has now.
Jeff Spellman will be followed by Judy Spearbuck.
Good afternoon, Mayor Gallego, Councilwoman Guevara, and council members. Really appreciate being here. Jeff Spellman with the Violence Impact Project Coalition, and I represent neighborhood groups from Dunlap to Indian School, 35th Avenue to 19th Avenue, and this application is in that area. I think, Vanya, you kind of told the story already, so I don't have to go into a lot of that. We had high hopes that we were going to come to an agreement with Sonny on this application, and some things that we would expect as a community for his commitment to make sure that we didn't see the same problems that we saw with the prior liquor license at that location, the Circle K. We had a lot of problems outside that building with people loitering, trespassing, crimes going on, and I think the report that you got from the police department kind of tells that. The one-mile average is 2.5 times the citywide average on property crimes, 2.4 times the citywide average on violent crimes. When you narrow down even closer to the quarter-mile, property crimes are 4.3 times the citywide average, violent crimes are four times the city average. That's unacceptable. 19th North and several of the neighborhood leaders did meet with Sonny at his other location at 19th Avenue in Glendale, and we actually were pretty impressed inside his store, how he runs inside the store. The problem was with things that we were seeing outside the store, on his property, where there weren't cameras, things weren't being controlled in terms of trespassing and drug dealing and things like that. Many neighborhood leaders saw drug deals going on regularly at his location at 19th Avenue in Glendale. That's exactly what we've seen go on at the Circle K location, which is why we asked for some concessions from him on this license, very simple things on hours of restrictions, when the alcohol would be sold, and things like not selling single serves. Those were pretty simple asks on our part, and we're certainly willing to continue to talk with him, but as of now, he has not agreed to those things. We certainly appreciate your office helping to navigate that process, but we certainly would appreciate a recommendation of no at this time, and we'll certainly continue to work as it goes toward the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Spearbuck.
I've lived in my home at 1650 West Harmon Drive. Excuse me. Thank you. For 42 years, I was raised here in Phoenix. I have watched that corner go from a wonderful place to live to afraid to walk the streets. There is too much going on there that is something that we're trying to clean up. The Circle K that was there closed for several reasons, which was the homeless would be in front, people could not go inside because they were being afraid that they would be roughed up, as usual. Our poor police department in that entire area was there almost every single day and night, keeping that area open. We are opposing, we don't mind the In-N-Out convenience store, which to me is another high-class name for Circle K, but we are opposing the liquor due to the fact that you have the affordable housing right down the street, which is, from what I understand, you have to have a job, you cannot have any police record, drug record, anything like that, to live there. That's what I was told. You're going to have single mothers with children. You don't need a store to be selling alcohol to attract the homeless again. You have Sprouts, you have Walgreens, and you have Albertsons. Those all sell liquor. We're just trying to clean up our area. The rail, yes and no. But the problem is, our police department doesn't have the amount of people that we need to help us. They're great, they're always there, but our homeless section there is getting out of control. And having alcohol in this store, they could have a slurping machine. Do something for people that are living in that area which have a lot of children. And then you have the methadone clinic down on 23rd Avenue, which creates a lot of problems also. So all of us people that have lived there, like I said, I've been there 42 years, my neighbor was there when it was built in '67, and we're just trying to put it back to where it was, where it's a safe place to walk at night, morning, and for kids to grow up in. There also, because we have all, I'll be real quick, we have a dead alley, and now we're going, we were approved to go ahead and gate that alley off because of all the homeless living back in the alley and whatever they're doing back there. So I would hope that you do not approve of this liquor license for everybody in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Hardeep Singh.
Hi, Hardeep Chima, owner of new convenience store, 19th Avenue North, and welcome all community and the city council members. After reading a good neighbor agreement, I understand that community neighbors concerned by the public safety regarding opening a new store on that location. First of all, I would like to clarify the misrepresentation of the business that this store is going to be a convenience store, not a liquor store. Considering community members' safety concerns and their recommendation, I would like to go with the change and the voluntary measure. I agree to hope that it will be a great impact to public health, safety, and economic development and surrounding that area. I will abide a Arizona alcohol law not to selling alcohol beverage between 2:00 a.m. to 6:00, installing external security cameras in all directions around the building, meet with the signatory designated and quarterly basis community update and the concern, and I will become a member, and I will regularly participate in the 19 North Business Alliance Leadership Team, deter crime by reporting suspicious activity or crime to the Phoenix Police Department. Honoring community recommendation, I have changed the exterior view of the business, secured the fence from the building, and I will post no loitering sign, will train the staff and source it. I respectfully request that you recommend me liquor license for approval. Any questions? I'm open. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Are we ready for a vote? Roll call.
Guevara.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring. Gallego.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 28 is the Medlock Market and Deli. It is also in Councilwoman Guevara's district. We have cards marked in favor and opposed. What is your pleasure? Councilwoman.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to continue this item.
We have a motion to continue item 28. Do we have a second?
Second.
June 5, 2019.
We have a motion in a second. The cards are all marked in favor or opposed. We do have one card opposed to continuance from Kurt Decker. Kurt, if you want to come forward and provide testimony?
Council members and others concerned with the safety and security of the residents near the proposed liquor distribution point. My name is Kurt Decker. I am the president and board member of Villa West 5 for over 23 years. Villa West 5 Homeowners Association is right across the street, small street, to this property. I represent 128 out of 180 families within 800 feet of this proposed store, not including the apartments to our north nor across 43rd Avenue. The closest family is only 20 yards away. The school bus stop is only 90 yards away. 20 years ago, we installed wrought iron fences with nine gates to help secure the residents that we represent. 10 years ago, we closed and locked all nine gates, including all walk-through gates, leaving only one street entrance. We built a pass-through gate for schoolchildren closest to the school. We hired security guards. Some were off-duty police officers. The current one is Doug Clark, a constable for the City of Phoenix. I have personally helped apprehend drug dealers and trespassers. We've fought gang violence, pedophiles, prostitution, car theft rings, homeless, and drunks. Important families live there. My daughters live there. My son lives there. I am fighting for my family. Less than 400 yards away is another liquor store. Our community has been quieter, safer, and cleaner since Circle K closed their doors. One of the reasons Circle K closed their doors was the violence. I understand that the current owners of the old Circle K has $225,000 at stake. I personally have $1.2 million at stake in this community, and our combined value is $10.9 million at stake. Help me protect my family, my son, our daughters, and those of 128 families with their small children. Deny this continuance and deny the application. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a card from the applicant and a card from Lori Fitzhugh of the Neighborhood Association. If either of you would like to provide testimony on the continuance, we will hear the actual item on June 5, but if you would like to provide testimony on the continuance, you may do so. We also have several cards marked in opposition.
Lori Fitzhugh, Sevilla Neighborhood Association, mayor and council. Our Neighborhood Association has not discussed a continuance, so at this point, we are not in opposition to a continuance. Thank you.
Thank you. If we have no additional questions, all those in favor of the continuance, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. This item will be back before us on June 5. Thank you. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
We do. Motion to approve items 29 through 103, except the following items, 44, 45, 46, 53, 55, 58, 64, 65, 79, 81, 82, 83, 93, and 103. Items 35, 62, 63, and 68 are as revised, and items 43 and 56 have been withdrawn.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Motion in a second. Any questions on the motion? Roll call. Councilwoman Pastor.
I just have a question. 82 and 103 are as revised, too.
But we're pulling those out.
Okay.
So, correct anisa, so I don't say those, because, yeah.
Got it.
So they're pulled out.
Thank you. Roll call.
Guevara. Mendoza. Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes. Passes unanimously. We'll leave the next item as item 44, an MOU with Launa. Do we have a motion?
I move item 44.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Gallego.
Yes. Passes seven to one. Congratulations to Launa. Item 45 is an update to our MOU with Ask Me 2960. Do we have a motion?
I move item 45.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Nowakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Gallego.
Yes. Motion passes seven to one. Congratulations to Ask Me. Item 46 is adopt a proposed pension funding policy per state law. We'll have
I make a motion to approve item 46 as it relates to PSPRS.
Mayor, I have a potential conflict. We will not participate.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Roll call.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Gallego.
Yes. Passes six to one.
I make a motion to approve item 46 as it relates to COVID-19.
Second.
And I'm going to declare conflict.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Stark will not participate in the vote. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza. Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Gallego.
Yes. Passes six to one. Item 53.
Move approval.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza. Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Gallego.
Yes. Motion passes seven to one. Item 55.
Move approval. Second.
Roll call.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Nowakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Gallego.
Yes. Passes seven to one. Item number 58 is Head Start Birth-to-Five Supplemental Duration Funding. This is an exciting item for our city that will add hundreds of full-day Head Start slots. I think early childhood education is a passion of this city council, and this is an exciting good news vote. Anyone else have any questions or comments on this item?
Move to approve item 58.
Second.
Roll call.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes. Passes unanimously.
I was waiting for Waring.
The chairman of the committee that brought this forward, eh? For our youngest residents, we get a unanimous vote.
I thought I'd mix it up for you guys.
But so we don't get too confident in our patterns.
Yeah, I'm watching complacent, you know.
Item number 64.
Move approval.
Second.
Can we move 64 and 65?
Move both, yeah.
They are both art at Sky Harbor.
Move for both.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for both 64 and 65. Roll call.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Williams. Williams?
Say Williams, yeah.
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said Waring.
Williams, yes.
Come on, Waring, you can do it.
Waring.
No.
Gallego.
Yes, passes seven to one.[1689.51]
No.
Gallego?
Yes. Passes seven to one.
But just to keep you on your toes, I move item seventy-nine.
Second.
We have a motion. Do we have a second on seventy-nine? Nursing stations at Sky Harbor?
Second.
This is also a good news item where we're going to make Sky Harbor more accommodating for nursing moms. Having gone through this experience as a young mom, they sent me outside of security to nurse my baby when my plane was delayed, and then TSA was very unhappy with that. So, we're going to be making TSA and our nursing moms a little bit happier today. Roll call.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes. A unanimous vote for our youngest residents.
Woo!
Eight-zero. Item eighty-one, we have one clerk, one card from Leonard Clark, marked neutral.
Move to approve item eighty-one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Clark.
Thank you, mayor and council members. This is the transportation thing. Yes, now that I'm writing it more and taking more of an interest, I should have before. So, I was looking at it briefly, and I hope that you will vote for it. It's going to become more important as these matters are occurring in the Middle East right now, Strait of Hormuz. I think we're going to have some more Phoenix residents who are going to start considering taking our buses because their gasoline might be going up a couple dollars since we're looking at a war possibly going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman or Vice Mayor Waring?
Just for Ed, this is just a technical correction, correct?
Vice Mayor Waring, yes, this is just cleaning up some language, particularly as it relates to the outlets we sell them, sell passes at. It does not affect the fares themselves.
Thank you. Thank you. Roll call.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Item eighty-two is relates to changes to Phoenix speed limits. Will the clerk please read the title?
Item number eighty-two is for ordinance G six-five-eight-nine and ordinance amending chapter thirty-six, vehicles and traffic, article twelve, section thirty-six dash one-five-eight, schedule one of the city, of the Phoenix City Code relating to local speed limits.
Leonard Clark has a card marked as opposed.
Excuse me, Mayor. My name is Leonard Clark. That is, I thought that I had marked neutral on there, so if I did put opposed, I'll correct it after this. Looking it over, I'm actually supporting it because people go crazy down our streets. I like the fact that what I'm briefly looking at in the summary is that you're going to be more involved in changing the speed limits. I mean, if they're changed, the council will have, be doing even more oversight because people are just going crazy driving through our neighborhoods, you know, gunning their engines. They don't care if little kids are playing out there. Ball goes out in the street, and I'm quite frankly sick of it. So, I am hoping you'll vote for this, so you'll have more insight and oversight of what's going on. So, I would like to put that down as a support, but I did not mean to put that as opposed, and I do apologize for that. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for your testimony. Any council member comments or questions? We have a motion.
Move to approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Noakowski?
I have a couple of questions really quick.
Please, Councilman.
Did this go through a subcommittee?
Yes.
And did it go through our village, villages also, or?
Our deputy city manager, Mariar Panigua, is here.
Mayor and Councilman Noakowski, this did go through the subcommittee. I don't believe we took this through the village planning committees.
And what kind of community outreach was there besides the subcommittee?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, not, we don't typically go through public outreach on this. It's something we'll use, sometimes respond to community input regarding speed limits on sections of roadways. It's something we evaluate based on the data that we see out here. It could be accidents. It could be complaints we see from the public. So, it's something we continually evaluate. Sometimes it's as new construction happens, as well as we have roadways that enter into our network, and we have improvements that are done. So, we'll continually evaluate whether the speed limits go up or down in those locations, so.
And will there be some type of educational program to educate people that thirty-five is going down to thirty, and so if you're used to just driving thirty-five miles per hour down the street, then all of a sudden it changes overnight? Are we going to let people know, or is there some type of educational component to this?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, that's something we can get back to on, as far as when those signage changes do happen. Sometimes we do put out there signs that say change in traffic control or speed control is in there, but I'll verify with that when I'll get with your office.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'll be a yes.
Thank you.
Pastor? Stark?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Gallego?
Yes. Passes seven to one.
Move to approve item eighty-three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the city clerk please read the title?
Item number eighty-three is for ordinance G six-five-nine-zero and ordinance amending Phoenix City Code, chapter thirty-one, streets and sidewalks, article seven, temporary use of right-of-way, section thirty-one eighty-B definitions, and to repeal sections thirty-one dash eighty-five and thirty-one dash eighty-six pertaining to dockless bike share.
Any sort of questions from the council? Roll call.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Move to approve item ninety-three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item ninety-three, the West Anthem Water and Wastewater Infrastructure Improvements. Leonard Clark.
Thank you, mayor and council. My name is Leonard Clark. I live in District One, up near Wet and Wild, up in that area, and I'm glad that you're doing oversight and helping other communities. I know that they're becoming more and more concerned for water. We've had some wet, we've had like a wet winter, but I think that it's important that we continue to have a very strong oversight and future planning for our water concerns. I don't think this wet winter should fool us, so even though I did put neutral on that, I'm staying neutral. I'm a little nervous about all the developers and all the rest of it going on. I don't really know how much we can sustain, especially in this day of man-made global climate change. Apologies to my conservative friends. It's not a Chinese hoax. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes. Item passes unanimously. Next item is item one-oh-three.
I move approval of the recent terms and conditions of employment dated May fourteenth, twenty-nineteen, noted as attachment B of item one-oh-three. I want to highlight that this TCE will convert to a memoranda of understanding if the union signs it by May twenty-second, twenty-nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have several cards on this item. Two individual, sorry, one individual, James McNeil, has donated his time to Scott Leahy, so he will have four minutes. Scott, please.
As pronounced Leahy, Gallego. Congratulations to you on your victory as a mayor, and thank you all for being here to hear us, and we appreciate everything you do, Ed. It's a big job, lot of money, huge. And so, right off the bat, I'm not here to complain, but I do want to expose something to you, what has occurred in the undercurrent, focusing on the snapshot and how that went about. Now, we all realize there's a lot of money involved with the pension. It's huge. Adjustments did have to be made. But for me, being twenty years in the city, I've had five different positions and excelled in everything I've done. I've enjoyed serving, and I've enjoyed the benefits of working for the city. But I took kind of a lower pay and said, look, this is a reward, not a spike. Total mischaracterization during the Prop forty-seven, and that was very unappreciated by most of us. Everybody actually works for the city, the backbone, the people that are providing the services. We deserved a little better respect than what we had to deal with, and many bailed because of the threat. Well, the citizens voted on our behalf. Now, a huge responsibility on your behalf is that we got a huge pension problem. We can't afford it. You should have phased that in. Why couldn't you figure it out? You could have phased it in. The undercurrent is more than you know. The interpersonal effect is negative. You don't see a lot of it because we're professional. We do our jobs. We don't want to be mean people. But believe me, everybody I talked to in my position, that we're all disgruntled about it. We don't feel respected. We felt what we were, many of them were ousted, and they're saying, well, that's what they wanted to do. They wanted to get rid of us. Well, then you faced more money because there were more retirees. Now, this problem was not created by us, even though it is our pension, and you put a lot of money into it. The problem was probably more about mismanagement earlier on in the culprits, and of course, there was an economic effect that made it more challenging. But to just, you know, just come through the back door after the citizen said, no, we don't want to mess with their pensions, come through the back door, left jab, okay, the sick, and right after that, a double jab. I mean, come on, man. In a boxing ring, it's like, okay, we got hit, and now we're going to come back. But the effect is, it's an analogy of boxing. It's a negative effect. It's an undercurrent. Why don't you go down there and tell them? Everybody's telling, everybody I work with, they don't care. They're going to do it. They've done it, and they're going to keep it. It's just the wrong way that you dealt, that we were dealt with on that. There should have been a phase in. I think all of you, if you had worked together, maybe come up with some different way. We will concede the sick, snapshot. But come on, work a little harder. We expect you to work as hard as we do. We work hard. Thank you very much, Ed, for telling us that. We like the letters. But really, let's roll up them sleeves a little tighter, and let's figure out how to manage it. There's a lot of money available. Spend it. We are worth it. I mean, look, I gave my fifteen years at that point. Now, it's twenty. Can you repay that fraction of what the snapshot takes from me, my family? Can you? No. Come on. It shouldn't be that hard. I know it's challenging. You should have, you should, you should try to do a little better with that. The double snapshot, boy, that was rough. But you know, it's really, so the internal organization is suffering a bit, more than a bit, and it's, it's, it's an issue. I just want you to think about the effect it has had on us interpersonal, interpersonally and how we're talking. That's the inside story you need to know. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Richard Ray, followed by Dolores Henderson.
I can't begin to try to pretend that I totally understand the frustrations that perhaps the previous speaker was talking about, but I think that there's a far bigger question that we have to deal with. The city of Phoenix is still recovering, to use his boxing analogy. It's still recovering from a pretty darn rough second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth ring confrontation. It's coming back, but it takes a lot, and everybody has suffered, and it's tough, and it's very tough. And I don't mean to denigrate and/or ignore the frustrations these people have, but I can speak with a fair amount of knowledge about the pension issue and what the city of Phoenix is having to deal with in reference to pensions and going forward. And I can tell you from having been on committees that did it and then looking at it, that the city has done as good a job or better job than most cities can do to attempt to address the package. I've heard it misrepresented oftentimes that it was, the can was kicked down the road. That wasn't it at all. There is a financial and a legal problem than you're dealing with the pensions that cannot be easily erased and cannot be done unless there's an immense amount of cash or, or income that comes in. And I've, I feel, I feel, and I don't, I don't disregard it, but it takes time to do, and I'm trusting that the people that are managing this and doing an excellent job will continue to do so, and I don't want to see it misrepresented as being something that they ignored or kicked down. They just didn't have the money, and now it's a matter of trying to slowly get back. It'd be nice if we could just pull the money out of the air, but we can't do it, so I hope that that'll be heard.
Thank you. Dolores will be followed by Leonard Clark.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council. My name is Dolores Henderson. I am the proud vice president of Ask Me Local twenty-four, twenty-three eighty-four. I have been told numerous times that I must learn to keep my emotions out of my decisions and actions. I have to admit that it is very difficult, and I'm not going to start now. It is hard to find people that think of others before they think of themselves. I am fortunate to have one of those people as the president of my local, Mario Yalla. He stands up for the membership and their rights without even thinking of the repercussions he might face. I hope that you, Mayor Gallego, and council members, realize that he is here for the I hope that you, Mayor Gallego, and council members realize that he is here for the members, the citizens, and you. He has no political or selfish gains. He is here to work together with you to make the city the place where people want to come to work and stay, the way it used to be. He wants to make sure that employees are treated fairly and equally. I just want to say thank you to the President of my local, Mario Yalla, for the dedication he showed to come to an agreement with the city of Phoenix. I believe that with him and the leadership of Ask Me Local 2384 and the leadership of City Council, you, Mayor Gallego, together we can accomplish so many great things to make the city of Phoenix competitive. Together, we can improve wages, we can improve the work environment, we can increase morale, we can retain employees, and we can attract new employees. The only way we can do that is with good leadership and working together. The leadership and membership of Ask Me Local 2384 are here to work together with you. Let's work together. Let's learn from each other. Let's help each other accomplish goals that benefit all of us, including the citizens of Phoenix. So again, thank you, Mario. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. But most of all, I want to thank my brothers and sisters of Ask Me Local 2384 for supporting their leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final card on this item is from Leonard Clark.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As a lifelong resident, born right down the street at Good Samaritan Hospital, I strongly support our brothers and sisters who, you know, in the unions who come together to make sure that they have a fair living wage and standard of living the way it used to be in the United States of America before the corporations just started paying people these horrible, unsurvivable wages. So thank you. I hope that you will work with our brothers and sisters who do a great job for the city of Phoenix. I see them out there and do, you know, despite some criticism, they're the ones that show up at 2:00 AM in the morning or put their lives on the line, and I strongly support our brothers and sisters, especially in Ask Me and all of our unions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember comments and questions. Councilman Noakowski.
At this time, I just really want to thank Mario and all of the members of the union for really sitting down, doing what's good for the city of Phoenix. I know it's really hard for you all, my allergies are kicking in. I know it was really hard for you to really sit down and, and, and work it out, but my respects to you. My door is always open to whatever you all need, and thank you so much for what you all do for the city of Phoenix and all the services you provide for our residents. God bless you all. Thanks.
Thank you. Roll call.
Guevara.
Yes.
Vendosa.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastora.
I have some comments. I didn't realize it was going to go that quick. So I am just happy to support these terms and conditions of employment for Ask Me 2384 because I know that the, that if Unit 2 chooses to ratify these terms and conditions of employment imposed by the City Council before May 22, 2019, the City Manager is authorized to execute a memoranda of understanding for the city that is consistent and in coordinate, in accordance with the terms and conditions imposed by the Council. So what that means is there will be an MIU for all units, including Unit 2, if you sign by May 22. So, but I also want to say, as the city of Phoenix leaders, it is really incumbent upon us to find solutions wherever our employees' well-being, dignity, respect, and morale are concerned. And because of the time and attention that has been given toward the making of these terms, I hopefully will see a ratified memoranda by all parties, and I'm confident that it will be. But what it also brought forward, we're concerned about wages, hours, and working conditions. And so our most valuable assets are employees, and I have great faith that we will look into these areas and make it so that the morale is at standard. Because of all the strong leaders involved, which there were all a bunch of leaders that were involved to come to these solutions, I want to thank Ask Me Local 2384, Unit 2, our city leadership and staff, and my colleagues here at the city who will support these negotiations. And thank you, and appreciate all the work. I'm a yes.
Stark.
I want to thank our staff as well, and I'm a yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Gallego.
Yes.
Come on, Waring.
Motion passes seven to one. Congratulations to all involved. There's, I certainly am committed to continuing to work with Ask Me, to have the best city possible, and thank you to our HR team. That is our final labor contract, so lots to celebrate with today's council meeting. That is our final agendized item, and we will next turn to public comment, Reese Morgan,
Hello, my name is Reese Morgan. I am 11 years old and go to Apology at church. My dad is Pastor Zach Morgan, who has spoken with you more, more than once. I'm here to talk about the issue of abortion. First off, I know I'm younger than most people that talk to you, but I can assure you that I feel the same about abortion as my dad and many other people. An abortion is this, slaughtering a developing human in the womb. Call the baby what you will, zygote, fetus, I can tell you the meaning of both of those words. Zygote, the earliest stage of development. Fetus is simply baby in Latin. So both of those terms people use are scientifically incorrect. They say those words mean the developing human in the womb is well just a clump of cells. If the baby is not alive at conception, how is the baby alive when he or she is born? They rip the baby limb from limb or just sell it and just sell it away, throw it away or just sell it. It's downright murder is what it is, and you know it. There are plenty of people who tell you that at every single meeting. I think it's disgusting and dishonorable that you, Mayor Gallego, are proud to support that. Proverbs 24 verse 11 says, "Rescue those who are being taken away to death; hold back those who are stumbling to the slaughter." That verse shows us what we must do as Christians to fight away against abortion. God hates abortion. Here are some verses that tell us that. Proverbs 6, 16 through 19. There are six things that the Lord hates, seven that are an abomination to him. Haughty eyes, a lying tongue, and hands that shed innocent blood, a heart that devises wicked plans, feet that make haste to run to evil, a false witness who breathes out lives, and one who sows discord among brothers. There was one that stood out there about abortion, right? God thinks that hands that shed innocent blood are an abomination. He thinks abortion is an abomination. And if you think that we're wrong and God doesn't exist, well, you should spend some time reading your Bible and repent of your sins. If you think that crushing little baby boys and little baby girls' heads and ripping out their intestines before they can even see the world is right, then there is something very wrong in your brain because those babies can feel that pain. They cannot scream, they cannot kick, they just die, and you don't do anything about it. They didn't do anything to deserve what they get. They never committed a crime or sinned. So why do babies constantly get the death penalty? God made them for a reason, and the so-called doctors, murderers really, end their lives. Psalms 127 verse 3 says, "Behold, babies are, children are heritage from the Lord; the fruit of the womb is a reward." Our twisted world thinks that babies are some kind of monster or something. I have a two-month-old baby sister at home, and I can tell you that she is the exact opposite of a monster. And I think that if people just gave babies a chance, they would see that they're anything but a monster. And as the civil magistrates, you guys can stop those murderers. So please, make Phoenix a sanctuary city for the unborn. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Hendrickson is followed by Alex Dorst.
Hi, my name is Mikey. I strive to love Jesus each and every day. I've been paying attention at the meetings I've attended, and I've noticed a few things. Number one, city council meetings are very long. Number two, when you guys are saying yes to something, you're actually saying no to something else. I'm here to ask you today to change your mind on abortion. Instead of saying yes to Planned Parenthood and no to babies, you can easily say yes to babies and no to Planned Parenthood. When you're saying no to Planned Parenthood, you're saying no to murder. That seems to make more sense than saying yes to murder. I've heard many of you justify a reason for saying yes to a proposal during these meetings. How do you justify saying yes to murdering a baby? Mayor Gallego, I don't understand. You had a baby. Knowing that abortions end the life of human beings, how do you say yes? And yes, and smile and take pictures with others who say yes too? I know I'm just a kid, but that is exactly my point. These babies are kids just like me. Were you ever a kid? How long were you in your mother's womb? My mom was only seven months pregnant when I was born. In many states, my mom could have had the doctor rip my arms off and squish my head at 34 weeks, since you know I was still a parasite and all. That's crazy for me to think about. Funny thing is, I'm nine years old, and you could still call me a parasite. I can't survive without my mom and dad. I need their, I need their money, I need their help, I need them to give me food and shelter, I need their love, or I would die. Would any of you feel comfortable allowing a doctor to rip off my legs or inject me with poison right here and right now? Please tell me you can see I'm a human being, the same human being that left my mother's womb many weeks before my due date. Is it okay to kill somebody because of their location? Does 20 feet or 6 inches decide who lives and who dies? My mother's womb is sitting right there. Is it level of development, age? What standard are you using? Don't you see that all these arguments are silly when you're talking about life of a unique person? Abortion is murder. A human is being, a human being, a baby is a human being, and abortion is murder. Even kids know that.
Alex Dorst is followed by Larry Affana.
Honorable Mayor Gallego, esteemed council members, good afternoon. My name is Alex Dorst. I am here today to bring up some serious safety issues occurring at Deer Valley Airport. I've been a pilot since 1975, and in my 44 years of flying and owning aircraft, I've never experienced what is taking place today at Deer Valley. I hold an air transport pilot certificate. I'm a tenant at that airport. I use my airplane for personal transportation as part of my business. Simply put, Deer, Deer Valley Airport, an airport that is home to over 1,100 aircraft owners, pilots, does not have adequate maintenance facilities nor personnel to ensure the safety of the pilots flying those airplanes and get the proper training. According to Deer Valley's current rules, it appears that there are no mechanics nor flight instructors actually properly permitted to operate on the field to serve the needs of those people. We have two flight schools that have their own maintenance and flight instruction departments, but for the rest of us, there really is no one. This is due in part to a system of outdated rules and regulations, but more importantly, it's due to an airport management administration that refuses to address current times and current real-world situations and act on them. Due to this total lack of proper management, the greater part of the required maintenance and flight instruction conducted at Deer Valley Airport is being done under the radar and thus sadly not in compliance with airport rules. For reasons yet undetermined, the airport manager recently launched a Gestapo-type attack on five tenants in the airport community. Eviction and airport termination notices were sent out without warning and without due process. I was one of those tenants. My crime was allowing my mechanic to have access to my hangar when I was out of town on business. I was not even aware that this was apparently deemed by the administration to be a gross violation punishable by immediate eviction. A simple phone call to me is all it would have taken to correct the issue. Subsequently, I found myself and four other tenants evicted. We have all reached out to the airport administration to try to meet up with them, including James Bennett, the airport administrator, airport director, but they simply refused to meet with us and sit down to discuss solving what is an ongoing problem. On behalf of myself and other thousand-plus aircraft owners and pilots and flight instructors at Deer Valley Airport, I request that the mayor's office embark upon an open-minded inquiry to determine and resolve the issues at Deer Valley. Two of the affected tenants have already engaged in expensive legal counsel. My hope would be that we could resolve this with responsible adult discussion rather than engaging in long-drawn-out legal battles. The solutions to Deer Valley's problems are actually readily and handily available without great expense to the city, but only if someone will take the time to sit down and address it. Unfortunately, Deer Valley Airport has experienced some tragic accidents in the past couple of years. Perhaps they could have been avoided had we had better training and better maintenance available. Hopefully, moving forward, these shortcomings can be rectified. Everybody, it's all about safety, and thank you for your time. By the way, one more thing, I'd like to see a show of hands of everybody from Deer Valley Airport that's here today. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Larry will be followed by Leonard Clark.
Good afternoon. Honorable Mayor Gallego and esteemed council members, my name is Larry Affana. I reside at 939 East Ascuda Drive, Phoenix, Arizona, 85024. I'm here today to bring up some serious safety issues at Deer Valley Airport as I have been a pilot and aircraft mechanic since the early 90s. For the last 28 years, I've watched the aviation industry change in many ways, many positive things have happened. Recently, however, as big business is taking over punishing the little guys out, out here, we are faced with new challenges. In the last two years at Deer Valley Airport, all full-service maintenance providers have shut down or left. We currently have eight mostly part-time mobile providers who are only allowed to perform preventative maintenance per the airport rules and regulations with over 1,000 aircraft on the field. This requires, ah, sorry about that, folks. That require everything from annual inspections to major aircraft maintenance on a repetitive basis at Deer Valley, and eight guys working out of the back of their pickup trucks that are limited to oil and tire changes without proper facilities even to jack an aircraft up. It seems to all of us, there are some major safety concerns that the city has swept under the rug for years. Recently, the airport administration conducted a three-and-a-half-month witch hunt, which, while still no resolution and no permanent, permitted maintenance on the field, we are asking you to look into the matter, as airport administration, all the way up to Director Bennett, are dragging their feet. We have personal concerns, however, the safety of my fellow aviators and the public that lives under the local airspace we fly in deserve your full and immediate attention. Unfortunately, as part of the witch hunt, I, as well as four other aircraft owners, have been served with eviction notices. My crime was providing needed aircraft maintenance in this dire situation. We have reached out singularly and as a group to airport administration to come to the table as reasonable adults and come up with a solution. This is a simple and readily available solution, however, the administration refuses to sit down and discuss it with us. The administration has wasted hundreds of hours of resources in this discriminatory witch hunt. This, this is time, money that could have been well-spent looking for a solution. With a simple phone call and a five-minute conversation, all this could have been avoided. However, in the interest of the common good, I'm glad this has come to light. We have aircraft that are grounded today because no one is permitted to maintain them, and as of today, Director Bennett still won't address this. He still refuses to engage in a phone call or an email personally to me. Since this action began, I have been unable to work, which has created a financial hardship for me. As you know, Deer Valley Airport has experienced some tragic fatal accidents in the last couple of years. Perhaps they could have been prevented with better availability of appropriate maintenance and flight training. Hopefully, moving forward, these shortcomings can be rectified, folks. It's all about safety. Thank you for taking the time to listen today.
Thank you. Leonard Clark will be followed by Stellar Durbin.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Leonard Clark. As you all know, we have a chief magistrate right now who's above the law. We have a king operating. You, I, I violate a subpoena, I go to jail. We have Handmaid's Tale going on in Alabama where if a woman is raped, or if her fetus, which people don't want to understand is, does not have a head or a torso, you are going to sentence them to 20 to 99 years. I say, old white men and myself, we don't know what it's like to be a woman who is raped. And now, and now in Alabama, if a woman is raped, she could potentially face 99 years? Quite frankly, I'm sick of the American Taliban. I saw this in Iraq. This goes on in Afghanistan. ISIL hates women. They, look at Malala, they shot her in the head. Girls aren't allowed to go to school. We have no business, you have your religious views, fine, have your religious views, but this is the United States of America. We are not a theocracy yet, although you are trying very hard, conservatives. We are not going to be Handmaid's Tale without a fight. We have a constitution whether you like it or not. And you are not somebody who might have a child, a fetus, who has no head and no lungs, and you're telling them they're going to go to jail, they're murderers? How dare you? And you use your children as props? We don't bring our children in here and use them as props. We are not Handmaid's Tale. It is prophecy coming true. Look at Alabama. We are not going to take this sitting down. We are not murderers. We stand up for humanity. If you don't like it, go to a theocracy. Go to Afghanistan, we're, okay? But we have a constitution. Women have rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Stellar Durbin is followed by Marcus Pittman.
Good afternoon. My name is Stellar Durbin. I am almost an 11-year-old human being, and I am also a follower of Jesus Christ. And I am coming to you today to plead for the lives of innocent and defenseless smaller human beings who are being murdered in our state and more importantly, in your city under your watch. I'm humbly asking you to hear my concerns. The result of not acting will lead to many more children being killed. We live during a time that people have made very creative and honestly silly arguments in order to make us feel better about cutting the heads off of human beings while safely in their mothers' bellies. Plea, people are saying that it is okay to murder a baby in the womb because it is very small and not fully developed. Remember when I said that these arguments were silly? That's because even a child like me can see through this very poor argument. We can still kill a small human beings because they are still growing? Well, how about me? I'm a small human being who is still developing. If my mother and father killed me by cutting my arms and legs off, crushing my skull, and throwing my small body into a trash can, would you have anything to say about it? I truly believe you would. I believe that about you. However, in the case of small human beings safely inside their mothers' bellies, you are allowing it to happen, even though it is against God's law to murder and against Arizona state law AZ 13-3603. Also, most of my closest friends are smaller than you. They are all, they are also still developing. I'm sure that you would protect them too. Finally, I need to address one of the most foolish attempts to excuse killing these defenseless humans. People will rename the small human, they will use words like zygote or fetus. Again, it doesn't take an expert to see through what is happening here. First of all, fetus comes from Latin, it simply means a baby. Also, we have many words to describe the different stages of human beings. We could use easily as, to say, infant or toddler or teenager or adult or elderly. Does calling a human teenager give us the right to kill, to kill them? Because we aren't calling them human. I really hope not because I am close to becoming one. I want to thank you for listening to me today. It was an honor to speak with you. I want to ask you to do your duty before God and stop the murder of these innocent victims. Please obey God and protect these children. Please make Phoenix a sanctuary city for these innocent human victims. Please uphold the current Arizona law that does not allow the murder of small human beings in their mothers' wombs. AZ 113-3603.
Marcus Pittman is followed by Emma Hendrickson.
I was actually going to speak on something boring like property rights today, but now that there's so much excitement in the room, I thought we could talk about a different kind of property, and that is that of a human being. We heard charges of theocracy and what about rape? What about rape? Well, I'll tell you about rape. Just because your dad is a bad guy doesn't mean that your child needs to be killed. What about, what about parents who abuse their children? They're bad people, should we murder that child too? It's silly, and I disagree with a lot of the Alabama law, the main thing being prison. I don't think anybody should get prison time for having abortion. I think they should get the death penalty. It's not, we shouldn't spend taxpayer dollars on that sort of thing. And then this idea about, about it being a theocracy, I just want to say that every source of law in a nation is a theocracy. The highest standard you use to determine what is law is what your god is. So in our nation, the Supreme Court is our god. They are the ones that determine what is right and what is wrong, what laws you can make and what laws you can't. I believe that the final source of all authority should be God's word. That is the determining factor of right and wrong. An atheist has no standard for law. According to an atheistic worldview, we're just blobs of cells spinning around in a purposeless universe. Rape is nothing more than atoms bumping into each other. It has no moral consequence whatsoever. Women can't be against rape if there is no absolute authority that determines what is right and what is wrong. But we can be against murder, we can be against abortion, because the Bible gives us a clear standard of morality. In the atheistic worldview, how can you say with absolute object authority that Hitler was wrong? He was the law, he was the government. If the government determines what is right and wrong, and that's your highest point for morality, you can't say that what Hitler did was wrong. But if God is the objective standard for all men in all places, in everywhere, in all of time, then God is the objective standard, and what Alabama is doing is right, and it is moral, and it is just, and everybody here knows it. Because everybody here is created in the image of God, and they will stand before God on Judgment Day with a knowledge of right from wrong. The Bible says that you're suppressing the truth in unrighteousness. And so that is why we come out here every single day, and we talk about abortion while Teresa Williams looks at her phone and ignores us. I got you on camera, looking at your phone while children are talking to you. It's disrespectful, and it's disgusting, and your voters should know about it.
Emma Hendrickson is followed by Lauren Walker.
Good afternoon. My name's Emma, and I am here to speak to you about God's wonderful creations. I have been studying zoology for two years, and I have learned many amazing things. Last month, when investigating our oceans, I learned about coral reefs. They are beautiful animals that God made on the fifth day of creation. They are protected by several laws enforced by the United States Environmental Protection Agency. We have laws, regulations, and even official task forces in place to keep baby coral safe. While I love sea life and all life, to be honest, it was surprising for me to discover that these boneless, brainless, bloodless, and nerveless animals are so fiercely protected by our government and have many special advocates. I read about how the state of Hawaii passed a bill to ban the sale of sunscreen that contain the chemical oxybenzone. Most sunscreens on the market have this chemical. Hawaii is asking for a radical change in order to save baby coral. Coral do not have fingers or toes equipped with--equipped with nails, or hearts and eyes that function like a human fetus does, yet they are protected by our government. Hawaii is willing to change the law to save babies, baby coral, that is. I asked my dad, wait, as I studied, I wondered why coral, manatees, sea turtles, and even puppies and kittens have protection under our law, but a human being inside their mother's womb does not. I asked my dad how this could be true. He told me to look up Arizona revised statute thirteen dash thirty-six-oh-three. To my surprise, I found out that abortions have been illegal in Arizona since nineteen oh-one. I ask you today, why do you not put an end to abortions knowing that this is the law? Why don't you tell the police in Phoenix, Arizona, to put an end to abortions? How--why--why do you not take away those pills that are used to kill innocent babies? How can you tell people that they can't raise laws that you want upheld, but murdering a baby is acceptable? This is inconsistent with an Arizona's constitution that you sought to uphold and with God's law. I am only in fifth grade, and I can easily see the compromise you are making. I do not understand how you can do this with no shame. Please take the necessary steps to make Phoenix a sanctuary city for the unborn. If the state of Georgia can pass the heartbeat bill, certainly you guys can work together to stop this evil marketing within your city. Abortion is murder. Please defend your citizens' right to life. End abortion now.
Lauren Walker followed by Addison Walker.
Honorable council members, my name is Lauren Walker. I'm eleven years old and a member of Apologia Church. I want to sincerely thank you for the time you have given me to speak today. I would like to begin by reminding you that there once was a time in American history when it was legal to own slaves, and racism was commonplace. Today, we look back on that point in history and think, how could those people have treated other human beings who simply had a different color of skin with such abuse? There is also a time in American history when parents slaughtered their own children, and government did nothing about it. That time is now. People are slaughtering their own precious babies, and its councils mean absolutely nothing to stop it. There will be a time in human history when people are going to look at this moment with disgust and shame, just as we look back in repulsion on slavery and racism today. In fact, John Piper reveals that between eighteen eighty-two and nineteen sixty-eight, three thousand four hundred forty-six black people were lynched in America. Today, more black babies are killed by abortionists every three days than all who were lynched in those years. And government is letting it happen. You should be concerned about the legacy you are leaving, but you should be even more concerned about how God is going to judge you on Judgment Day. He will judge you by His holy law, the Ten Commandments, the sixth one, which clearly states you shall not murder. Pastor and author David Platt warned us to quote, "Remember God's character." He is the holy and righteous judge of all, and he hates injustice. He detests the taking of innocent life, and he is the judge of all who participate in it. God is the judge of mothers who have aborted babies, fathers who have encouraged abortion, grandparents who have supported abortion, and friends who have advised abortion. God is the judge of doctors who have performed abortions, leaders who have permitted abortions, pastors who have counsel people to have abortions, and legislators who have worked to make abortion possible. That includes each and every one of you. You will be judged for your inaction on that day, because doing nothing is actually doing something. So I urge you to stand against abortion, fight against it. Do whatever is needed to ensure that Arizona state law thirty--that Arizona state law thirteen dash thirty-six-oh-three is enforced. Make Phoenix a sanctuary city for the unborn in order to follow the will of God. Consider the words of missionary C.C. to--to. Too long have we been waiting for one hour to begin? The time for waiting has passed, the hour of God has struck. War is declared, and God's holy name must rise and build. The God of heaven, He will fight for us as we for Him, and gates of millions of hell shall not prevail against us to such men as we fear. I would like to ask you, council members, with this question. Who do you fear? Man or God? God's word tells us in Luke twelve verse five, "But I will show you whom you should fear. Fear him, who after your body has been killed, has authority to throw you into hell." Yes, I tell you, fear him.
Hello, my name is Addison Walker, and I'm thirteen years old. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. Two years ago, at a Ponte Nera house, I was appalled by a saw. It looked as if someone destroyed two or three duck eggs by throwing them against a pillar. Shortly thereafter, we found out that it is illegal to move or disturb eggs like these. The penalty for moving or disturbing certain bird eggs is up to six months in prison and a fifteen thousand dollar fine. People respect laws such as this one when they are enforced with an active penalty. I have learned in school that as a council member, you have sworn to uphold the laws of Arizona. What I have not learned, though, is why are only certain laws enforced? I will ask you, what is a greater crime, destroying duck eggs or murdering preborn children? John MacArthur further shows the absurdity of this when he says that, quote, "Bags of babies are found by trash compactors." Yet, on the other side of this, a wounded American eagle was found recently in Maryland at rest for emergency treatment. However, it died, and a five thousand dollar reward was offered for the arrest of whoever did it. In the state of Massachusetts, there is an anti-coolty law that makes it illegal to water goldfish as a prize. Why? This is what it says, quote, "To prevent the tendency to dull humanitarian feelings, and to prevent--and to--and-- and to corrupt morals of those who abuse them," end quote. What he is basically saying is that some people are willing to protect goldfish from potential abuse, but they're not willing to lift a finger to protect preborn human children who are being murdered. Every day, Arizona state law thirteen dash thirty-six-oh-three, an active law which criminalizes abortion, is violated because it is not enforced. If you enforce this law, the murdering will cease, because the abortionists will spend the next two to five years in prison, or they will be scared of the penalty so they won't perform any more abortions. We can't just pick and choose which laws we want to enforce, because there's only one standard that we should base our lives and actions on, and that standard is God's word, the Bible. The Bible makes it clear that abortion is murder. We see in the Bible that God views life inside the womb just as valuable and worthy of protection as life outside the womb. Councilmen and women, you have--God has placed you in this role at this time for a purpose, and you will be judged on Judgment Day and given account for everything that you did or did not do. Dietrich Bonhoeffer, who was executed because he stood against his government for killing millions of Jews during World War II, said, quote, "Silence in the face of evil is itself evil. God would not hold us guiltless. Not to speak is to speak, not to act is to act," end quote. By choosing to ignore the murder that's happening in your city, you're choosing to act, and you are enabling that murder, and you will be held accountable. Thank you.
Mayor, at this time, we have had thirty minutes of public comments.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.